No.
Good evening. We're going to call this meeting January 5th, 2017, Muscatine City Council Meeting to Order, the first one of 2017. Fran, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmembers Ray Walt, Fitzgerald, Nat Big, Saseo, Bynum, Harvey.
Present.
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 I'll present, Your Honor. Thank you, Fran. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We're going to start our meeting tonight with a Leadership Muscatine presentation, and Adam is going to introduce our projects tonight.
Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to introduce the 2016-2017 Leadership Muscatine class. Today was our local government session. The class started off at Muscatine Power and Water, where we met with Sal and some of their staff down there and learned about Muscatine Power and Water's operations and their importance to the city of Muscatine, took a tour of the power plant. After that, we came to City Hall and learned more about the local government. Everyone that was with us today lives in city limits, so we learned about the importance of council and mayor and what your responsibilities are, what Greg and staff's responsibilities are, and how it all works together to have the great community that we live in. So we're just going to take a little bit of time, and we're going to have the class, the groups come up, and they're going to introduce themselves to council and tell you what their class project is. Leadership Muscatine, they have group projects that they complete every year as a part of their class. I guess, is there any questions for me before I have them come up on Leadership Muscatine? I believe everyone was here last year when we did this, so. All right, so, first group. Whoever wants to take it. There you go. And you guys can kind of come up and line up over here and wait, too, so we can get things going pretty quickly.
Hi, my name's Andrew Potts. I am taking Leadership Muscatine. I'm working with the Junior Lego League. It's basically Legos for young kids. Working with us out of the Iowa State Extension is really helping out there. Monsanto is really paying for the kits, for the kids. So it's really good. And again, I'll just be a coach. And it's a 10-week program. I think, being from the University of Iowa, such a local area really helps. And I do live in this area and work at GPC, so, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Hi, I'm Krista Garcia, and my project is going to be joining, working with the committee working on the dog park right now. I just decided this recently and actually was able to meet a couple of the ladies yesterday, so as far as where we're headed at this point, I don't know. But I know that fundraising will be a big section of that for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Krista.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Ellersmore. I work at Kent Corporation. And my project that I've been working on is an art project that can be displayed in the community, much like the cows were displayed in Chicago, or the Herky Hawkeyes were displayed in Iowa City. And there's actually another one, the American Gothic couple are being displayed in Cedar Rapids. They were displayed in 2016. So I'm working to incorporate the buttons as the major art piece, and then figuring out how to get the artists involved, as well as the application process, and then also all the components of working with the city, as well as the Muscatine Art Center and the Muscatine Industry and History Museum. So with this project being kind of larger in scope, I'm doing all the planning in 2017 with execution probably being in 2018. So, thank you.
Hello, I'm Jason For, Grain Processing. I'm going to be working with the Pine Creek Gris Mill out at Wildcat Den. Not sure exactly what that's going to look like, if it's just going to be volunteering time, but it sounds like they're excited for me to be a member of the board as well. So we're also looking for a treasurer, so probably fill a role through there.
Thank you, Jason.
My name is Mike Toyn with Carver Pump.
I'm Adam Truby with Monsanto Company.
And we will be joining the...
And Brian Griffiths with Monsanto Company.
And we'll be joining the Soapbox Derby.
So yeah, we're looking, so that's the original idea from last year's class that they've asked for help from this year's class on, is to replace a few outgoing members and to help sustain, make the organization sustainable, and to grow the event both here locally and make it a more regional event as well. So there's a lot of work to do after the great work they did in the first year.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joe Glenn with GPC. I'm going to be working on a project with MCSA to create a program for bridging families in the community, families in need for various types of support, and matching those families with sort of a support family in the community to assist in a number of things, including everything from just learning how to navigate resources in the community to, you know, just helping to create a good family dynamic for those people.
Thank you, Joe.
Hello, my name's Meyer Martinez. I'm with North Construction.
I'm Joey Pete. I'm with JD Power and Associates. So I moved here recently, about a year ago, and in California, this is something I participate in, and we are going to have the first Muscatine Corporate Olympics. So it's going to be five weeks of business-to-business sports competition, similar to Olympic Games. Our overall goal is to kind of better the perception of our companies, both internally and publicly, by promoting a fun corporate environment, organically increase communication across the different segments within our companies, promote community spirit and company spirit, promote, improve fitness and wellness within our companies and community, and provide a platform for interns, employees to develop friendships and network, and give back to the community through promoting local businesses, donation of potential proceeds, and some community service projects that we incorporate throughout.
Sounds good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of you. Our community appreciates all the things that you're doing to help us out. Go ahead, Adam.
Thank you for your time, Mayor and Council. Leadership Muscatine is primarily headed up by the Chamber of Commerce, so again, we'd like to thank them for all their help that they do with that. We have a great class this year with a lot of very, very good projects going on. These are all great young members of the Muscatine community. So thank you for your time, Council, Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to move on with the agenda tonight. Is there anybody here that would like to speak about anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Hearing nothing, we'll go ahead and move forward to number five, the Consent Agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 6A, items 12A through C, and tonight's bills totaling $2,469,546.68?
So moved. Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with all ayes. Moving on down the agenda, then, to 11A. Presented for City Council's consideration is the final reading of an ordinance correcting Scrivener's errors in ordinance numbers 93109-0715 and 93568-0816. Errors were made in the preparation of the above-mentioned ordinances. These ordinances will correct those errors. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading as submitted and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Ray Walt, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
And Spread?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted with all ayes. 11B. Presented for City Council's consideration is the second reading of an ordinance correcting Scrivener's errors, typographical errors, and/or omissions in City Code Sections Title IV, Chapter IV, Title VII, Chapter V, Title VII, Chapter IX, Title IX, Chapter IV, Title XIII, Chapter V, and Title XV, Chapter II. Errors and omissions were made in the preparation of ordinance numbers 93081-0615, codifying and amending the Muscatine Code of Ordinances. This ordinance will correct those errors. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there any, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we move to just waive the third one?
Okay.
You could make a motion to do that.
We'll make a motion to waive it, so we don't have to do another third one.
Is there a second to his motion?
Second.
Councilman Ray Walt, how do you vote to make this be the third? Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
And Saseo?
Aye.
And we'll go to the original one. Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Ray Walt?
Aye.
Ordinance is adopted with all ayes. 11C. Presented for City Council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the Kent Stein Park to Deep Lakes Park Trail Project. This new trail has been reviewed by the Iowa Department of Transportation and submitted to the Iowa Department of Transportation Office of Contracts and is on schedule for March 21st, 2017 bid letting. Federal funds available for this project are $459,636, with an additional $381,100 in state recreational trails funding, for a total grant funding amount of $840,736. The city will pay for a portion of the project, approximately $400,000, with funds from the spring 2018 bond issue. The estimated contract cost for the project is $1.3 million. Prior to any formal action by City Council, a public hearing is required. This public hearing will take place on Thursday, January 19th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Allen? Second.
Second.
Phil? Any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Saseo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Ray Walt?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Moving on to 11D on tonight's agenda. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve a cost-share agreement with Canadian Pacific, CP Rail. This agreement pertains to the impacts on Mississippi Drive and the riverfront stemming from CP Rail raising their tracks without notification to the city in 2014. CP Rail will be paying the city of Muscatine $4 million over a two-year period. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. Moving on to 11E. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve an agreement with CP Rail for the trail crossing at Dick Drake Way. The design of the Musser to Wiggins Road Trail has a crossing of the CP Rail tracks at and parallel to Dick Drake Way. Due to the funding of this project, the Iowa Department of Transportation requires an additional agreement between the city and CP Rail for this crossing prior to letting the project for construction. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. 11F. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve archaeological investigations for the Mississippi Drive Corridor Project. The environmental consultant and the city engineer are proposing these investigations be done in advance of project construction to eliminate the need for monitoring during construction. Staff is requesting City Council approve the expenditure of approximately $27,240 to $34,040 for these investigations prior to project construction scheduled for the spring of 2017. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Phil. Was there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick question, if I may. Is this kind of a shotgun approach, or are they specific error areas that they are already targeting?
Can you enlighten us, Jim?
I think I can, Mayor, Council. Shotgun approach or specific areas? There are four, four specific places that were identified in the environmental assessment where it is required that we have a representative of the state archaeologist's office, I guess is the right way to say that, there to monitor the construction while it's going on, just in case something were to be unearthed. And of course, that is scary to me unto itself. I don't know whether there's any more that needs to be said there, but to answer your question, it's four specific areas.
Okay. So let's say we start the project, okay? You start doing your archaeological digs. We look at four spots. We don't find nothing. And then we start doing our projects. Do they still do, do they come and do inspections? Are they going to come look while we're doing the projects, or are we done? If we didn't find nothing, we're good to go?
If we don't find anything...
Which we shouldn't.
Which, well, it's Mississippi Drive. I wouldn't say that.
Okay.
But if we don't find anything, then that allows us to...
Maybe some show.
Petition the state archaeologists to eliminate that requirement. And that would be a great thing, because that would then eliminate the possibility that that could cause delays during construction.
Yeah, maybe we did our due diligence type thing.
Right. And the people that we have selected to do it have an impeccable reputation with the state, and the people trust them, and I don't think we're going to have any problems that way. The big concern, and I might as well just say this, too, I know nobody asked this, but I might as well say this, is the big concern is that, obviously, maybe you find something in one of them, or two of them, and then what that does is maybe eliminates two of the four, or something like that. But it, the potential with a riverfront like that is always that you will find something. So...
Buttons or something, or what?
Say that again, like what?
I don't know, I'm thinking like the button company or something, like Clams.
No, it's pretty clear in the environmental stuff that even though they get excited about buttons, they realize that's real common around here. That's not like an endangered species or something where you'd have to preserve it there everywhere. So, no, not things like that. It would be hard for me to give an example. The best one I can come up with is all of a sudden, and keep in mind, this street project isn't going to dig way down, except for in a few spaces where we've got utilities that are going to go through. So it isn't like we're going to dig that whole roadway way down and go looking for trouble. We're going to get rid of the pavement on the surface, and we're going to put new pavement back in and call it good.
That's what I wasn't sure if we're digging in.
One other thing is if they go down with these little augers, and they find something and it's like 10 foot down, or it's below, where we would even disturb it, that's good documentation, and we can still petition the state archaeologists to eliminate the requirement because we're not going to be down there. So it's still there. It would still be preserved. Which sounds crazy, I know, but that's how it works.
You don't run the risk of them saying, "Ooh, we ought to investigate this further?"
I don't think so.
Like they find dinosaur bones or something like that?
No, it's not going to be dinosaur bones. I mean, it's going to be remnants of the original log cabin that was built on this side of Iowa, in Iowa. That little historical thing down here at Iowa and the plaque that's there, that's the kind of stuff that they're concerned about. And it's four very small, in comparison to the whole footprint of this project, four very small areas that they're specifically concerned with.
Jim, I think on one of the prior archaeological exercises, that originally it was going to be every 50 feet, but then they said, "No, it's got to be every 25," or maybe that was before you or...
Yeah, I don't remember that. I think that might have been part of the original EA work that was there. But what rolled out of that EA work was these conditions. So, okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Hearing no further questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. 11G. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve a letter of understanding between the Muscatine Police Department and the Muscatine County Sheriff's Office. The services provided by the animal control officer to the county are on an as-needed basis. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11H. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request from the police department to purchase two Stalker radar units. These two units will be replacements for two of the older units currently in service and will be placed in the new squads in the spring of 2017. Stalker is the sole vendor of these radar units. The total cost of the two units is $5,732, and there's $5,000 already budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second, Your Honor.
Is there any discussion?
One question. Greg, where do we come up with the $732 extra?
The, it'll come from the department's budget. In this specific line, Adam, Phil, do you want to address that issue?
My understanding was, I thought there was $5,600 budgeted for this, but that $700, the $700 or the $132, either one of those would just get absorbed by our budget.
Thank you, Phil.
Another comment is, I love the name of the unit, the Stalker units.
Well, that company is one that we've used consistently over the last number of years, and when you move from brand to brand, there are different features, different controls. It's easier to keep things similar, and that's actually the company name.
What happens to the two older units?
Some of it we keep for parts, especially the cones, the actual radar cones. The electronics, usually by the time we get rid of them, they're not worth anything. If there's a local agency here that has older equipment that is working even worse, we may offer it to them.
My mom finally pulled up there. It was $132 off, so it'll simply be absorbed.
Chief, you say it's the only company that makes exactly what you want?
It is the, there's other companies that make radar units.
Decatur and, there's three or more major companies, aren't there?
And the particular model that we use and that we want is only made by that company. If we, like I said, if you switch brands, different controls, different a lot, there's a lot of differences between the two of them. And I don't, I'm not one of them that picks out these particular radar units, but I know it's the brand that we've used for the last five to 10 years, and the model that all the officers are comfortable with.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Phil. Hearing no other questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11I. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request from the police department for the purchase of two light bars. Three bids were received for this purchase with the low bid, the state bid from Kel-Tec Incorporated, in the amount of $5,381.14. The purchase of these two light bars is part of the fiscal year 1617 budget. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11J. Is there a motion to approve the reappointment of Councilman Phil Fitzgerald to the Magic Board and the appointment of Amy Scott to the Transit Advisory Commission?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with all ayes. Number 12 on our agenda is Communications. Councilman Ray Walt, do you have anything tonight?
Yes. Greg, I guess I should ask you. Has the engineering firm submitted the final design for the Mississippi Drive project?
I'm going to send out the full schedule for the project letting process tomorrow in my update. There'll be Jim, the city engineer, Jim Edgeman, will be presenting a brief overview next week. The council will be setting the public hearing the following week, and the process rolls on from there. So the process is moving forward, and I'll have all the dates included in your package tomorrow.
We don't have it yet. The final design package.
Jim?
We do. Outstanding. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Councilman Harvey?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Saseo?
Nothing.
Councilman Bynum?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Nat Big?
I have nothing.
Councilman Spread?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Staff?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
I had just a couple of things. First of all, I would like to offer my congratulations to the 10 firefighters who received citations last week for their successful high-angle rope rescue. I was sad that I wasn't able to attend because I wasn't notified. I wish that the elected officials would have been notified of this ceremony so that we could have joined in honoring them. Next thing I would like to share is that the next coffee with the mayor is going to be January 21st at 9:00 AM at Happy Joe's. Everyone is welcome to come.
Which Happy Joe's?
The only one that's open at that time is the one on Lake Park Boulevard. Moving on the agenda to 15, we have a request to enter closed session per Iowa Code Section 21.5.1(c) to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in 21.5.1(c), to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation, or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation, and per Iowa Code, Section 622.10, to discuss attorney-client privilege and attorney-work product matters with legal counsel. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
You made the second.
Santos? Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Sosado?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Ray Walt?
Aye.
Nat Big, did you have something? Is that it?
And I have a motion to exclude the mayor from the closed session pursuant to provisions of the Iowa Code, Section 21.5.3a, because the city council finds that her presence at this meeting creates a conflict of interest, as she is a potential adverse party to the pending threatened litigation, and her presence could waive the city attorney-client privilege.
Is there a second?
Second, your honor.
Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Motion carries, and we are going to take a brief, five-to-10-minute recess to move into closed session. We're adjourned for this part. Thank you.